I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers, the committee of the whole. We're going to start with questions on the agenda. I need to move that up because I need to inform you that under the appointments on the COW agenda, there is a disparity in the code that we're going to work to correct. The library board terms are actually three years, but it says that in chapter sixteen, I believe, and it says two years in chapter two. And that's, we are noticing in our work together, we have a lot of cleanup to do there, so I just needed to explain that to you. And also let you know that the appointments noted for the advice and consent of council be approved by omnibus vote in the council meeting this evening. So, is there any discussion or objection to the appointments as presented?
So, we are going ahead with the library people. We just don't know if it's two or three years yet.
It's two, it's three years. We're going to go by the chapter sixteen where it's specific to the library as opposed to just the list that has it written in chapter two.
I brought this, I brought this up about six months ago, and it's, it's a state code, I was told, that's three years, three-year term. And yeah, and we were going to get it cleaned up. But yeah, it's, it's three years by state code.
Yeah. So, I want you to know, Janine and I spoke this morning about this kind of cleanup, and we have a chart in the office on my board. State code, right, fed into by our city code, fed into by the bylaws of all the boards and commissions. So, we're going to work to try to make sure that is all aligned, so everybody, so the public has easy access to what's going on with the city. Okay. Any, any further questions? Okay, we'll move to appointments and oath of office. City Administrator's Appointment and Oath of Office of Liam Miller as Human Resources Director effective May 26, 2021.
Miller.
I, Liam Miller, I, Liam Miller, having been newly appointed to the position of Human Resources Director, having been newly appointed to the position of Human Resources Director for the City of Moline, Illinois, for the City of Moline, Illinois, solemnly swear, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I support the Constitution of the United States, and the State of Illinois, and the State of Illinois, will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct, will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct, and the Moline Code of Ordinances, and the Moline Code of Ordinances, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the position of Human Resources Director for the City of Moline, Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the position of Human Resources Director for the City of Moline, Illinois, according to the best of my, according to the best of my. Thank you. So, Janine.
I should have read the next part, so you could have stayed down there, Mayor.
That's okay.
So, we have a presentation this evening, and Mayor Ryoputti is going to present some certificates of recognition to members of the Blackhawk College Highway Construction Program for their contribution to city beautification. We have Eric Griffith, our Parks and Recreation Director, and Jeff Manis, our Moline Center and Main Street Manager here. And I think Eric wants to say a few words about the work that this group has been doing.
Good evening, City Council. I would like to recognize the Blackhawk College Highway Construction Career Training Program with a certificate appreciation for not only the program itself, but also the eight students that are currently in the class and are going to graduate tomorrow afternoon. A little bit of background on the program. This program runs twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring. This is a full-time, thirteen-week class that covers math, job and life skills, blueprint reading, OSHA, stick welding, construction equipment operation, shop time, and hands-on projects. This pro, this program is at no cost to the participant, and they do get paid during the program as well. In the past year, while the city didn't hire any seasonal staff, and overall, the city was shorthanded, this program helped install six metal benches and two covered picnic tables as part of the hammer project down on Ben Butterworth Parkway, replaced rotten section markers at both Moline Memorial and Riverside Cemetery, installed new fencing and concrete pads at the Dog, at the Butterworth Dog Park, and finally, the brand-new parklot that's downtown Moline. This program is doing some amazing things around the Quad Cities, and I want to make sure that not only do City Council know that, but know that the students and the program are appreciative of this. This is a great partnership between Blackhawk College and the City of Moline. I'd like to thank the staff of Blackhawk College and the students that have helped this semester complete the three different projects for the city. I'd like to congratulate them on graduating tomorrow and wish them good luck on their next step in their journey.
Please correct me if I get your name incorrectly pronounced, amendment with my name, Cindy Carr, if I am used to, and then I try to get it right. Is Steven Brionas?
Exactly, he's in four of the eight.
Okay. Lindsay Campbell? Ariane Uyghur? Terrence Brooks-Madison? Kane Powers? Gabriel Ruffigan? Terrence Slater? Congratulations. Thank you so much, everybody.
Oh, uh.
Eric.
Not necessarily. I had worked with a downtown local artist to come up with this artist rendering of the parklot that was, was created by the team here at, at the apprenticeship program. And I had an opportunity to give all of the students magnets to hang on the toolboxes for many, many years to come as you work your way through the trades, and then also had these printed up for the professors. And one thing I really wanted to do as program directors, make sure you had one for your office.
Thank you so much.
Or, you know, they can go over the mantle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Blackhawk.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Now, we move to our agenda items. The first item of business is the Declaration of Surplus Vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to declare the following city vehicle, city-owned vehicle of surplus, a 2007 Ford Ranger, two-door. Staff has confirmation that this unit, number 572, is needed and prepares. They are in excess of the anticipated resale values. This unit was involved in an accident, and repairs will be more than the prospective resale value. Staff recommends approval.
Motion approved. Second?
Motion by Alderman Moyer, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Amendment of chapter twenty-six, police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, rank.
So, again, thank you, Mayor. The staff seeks approval from City Council on chapter twenty-six, police of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Following approval, to convert captain ranks to deputy chiefs. With approval of this proposal, the Moline Police Department would have a position, two positions of deputy chief, one of neighborhood policing, and the other one deputy chief of support services. Historically, the Moline Police Department has had three captain positions for most of its modern history. And the position of captain is the second highest ranking position as it serves as chief operating officers for different divisions of the department. In 2011, the department underwent a reduction of one captain position due to budget reductions. In 2019, the second captain retired and was scheduled to be filled in 2020. However, with the moratorium on hiring, that individual wasn't hired. So, upon restoration of funding for the 21 budget, the finance director informed council that the funds would be available in contingency. As an internal comparison, the Moline Fire Department has deputy chiefs, one for EMS and one for fires suppression. Public Works has deputies in municipal services, in fleet and facilities, general manager. And so, staff feels that allowing the police chief to appoint two deputy chiefs creates an effective exempt management team, and it also eliminates an unnecessary assessment center that is quite costly to timeline, and the timeline to conduct is quite lengthy. So, staff recommends approval of this change.
Motion approved. Second?
Motion approved by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Alder.
Thank you, Ryan. Chief, do, are there any other local departments that do this, or are they all still lieutenant captain?
Thank you, Alderman. We are one of the last departments that still have captains. Rock Island Police Department, Silas Police Department, both have the rank of deputy chief. The Sheriff's Department has captains, but then they have a chief deputy above the captains. So, it's chief deputy, and then they have three captains. And throughout the state, most of the rank are either commander in Chicago land area, and deputy chief, or deputy chief. So, I, Marty, I think you have that listed there. I think Champagne.
Yes.
Bloomington. I have a list there of, it might be in your car. Throughout the state, it's, it's.
Bloomington, Laurel, Champagne, Urbana, Quincy.
Yeah, so I went through the comparables of our similar-sized agencies, and it's, it's the best practice. And then, of course, our esteemed legal counsel, I ran that by them, and they agree throughout the state, that Antabook represents throughout.
Yes, Alderman Waldron. That's the second question.
I know.
Got it.
Only concern I have is that typically, we promote militarily style, even starting patrolman up to sergeant, sergeant to lieutenant, and so on up. This position might not necessarily come from lieutenants.
Correct.
Is that setting a precedent that will be hard to follow in the future? I'm sure you have some likely candidates right now, but let's say I'm a lieutenant with a master's degree and been waiting my turn. You know, I'm, you know, captain's position comes up, this is my moment. I want to, I want to go after it. If you were able to, as the chief, and I read that as, go after a sergeant who's in charge of traffic, as an example, are you fearful or worried of what you're telling that lieutenant who's been waiting his turn?
Yeah, well, I think that I would, I would take applications. I, I think that I would want to hear the qualifications as you speak of, of all of the candidates. And would, I think, working with HR, we would have a similar application interview process. I don't think that I see leadership or my position as, as picking someone just based on their, you know, friendly appearance, right? I want the best management possible. So, in your, in your case, maybe that qualification is the next deputy chief. And so, I think we would try to find that, that balance of, you know, proven leaders, experience, education, mix of experience in the department. And it very well may be a lieutenant. And we also had, had an issue, if you're familiar with them, Moline Police Department, a lot of our lieutenants are extremely young. I think two of them only have like eleven years of experience, you know, policing. One of them might have nineteen. So, when we were taking applications for captain, there was a lot of talk that there wouldn't even be enough captains, or enough lieutenants to apply for captain, and that would have triggered sergeants to be able to apply for captain anyway in the existing rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Chief, can I get an idea of, it mentions here, it's timely and costly for the certification process or the testing process. Can I just get an idea of how much time and/or money that typically costs?
Yeah, I think somewhere, and I had to look over at the new director, Human Resources, I believe it's fifteen to twenty thousand. Is that a fair range for the assessment center? And then, so we had, we had, had a contract with IO Solutions to do the assessment center, and that was about a three-month ordeal, wasn't it, at least? Okay, so, three to five months and fifteen to twenty, around.
Per person, fifteen to twenty?
Uh, no, to establish the group.
Okay.
Yeah. We would establish a list.
Okay.
Yeah, an eligibility list. And, and to be fair, just also, once there's an eligibility list in the existing captain rules, I get to pick from the top three in. So, not a huge change.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right. Hearing no more questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Third agenda item is YMCA Sewer Service IGA Amendment.
Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing you and the city clerk to execute and attest to First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of East Moline dated back to November first, 2016, to provide sewer service with the city of Moline property located at 5320 Twenty Second Avenue. We're seeking approval for an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the City of East Moline to provide sewer service to certain properties in proximity to our common border. The staff is proposing this amendment to allow four additional properties to the agreement. These properties are probably, or not probably, are most efficiently and cost-effectively served by the City of East Moline. The Two Rivers YMCA has an immediate need for sanitary sewer, and this is what prompted this discussion. I believe that East Moline has already reviewed this in their city council for one evening. It's up for a second evening vote. Our staff would recommend approval of this amendment to this sewer agreement with East Moline.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion from Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Number four, Brant Construction Contract for 2021 Seal Code Program.
Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Brant Construction using motor fuel taxes in the amount of $76,525. On March second, bids were open and publicly read for the Seal Code Program. Brant Construction was the low bidder at $76,525. They are the lowest and most responsible, responsible and responsive bid for the Seal Code Program, and staff would recommend approval.
Most.
Go ahead and make the motion. Motion to approve. Second?
Motion to approve by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Waldron.
I have a question.
You have a question, Alderman O'Brien?
Was the estimate of the project, was that on what you sent us?
Was that on what?
The estimate of what the cost of the actual project is?
I can have Joe Kuhlback answer that question, please.
What was the question?
The estimate of what the, the project will actually cost.
Yeah, so it's a unit, it's a unit cost. We have budgeted $100,000 in the program, I believe. So, we'll spend up to that $100,000 and stop at, cap it at that. But it's a unit cost. So, you know, whatever the, whatever materials put down is what we pay for.
Okay. So, if there's a huge gap in the bids, like one goes higher, this is my second. I keep a track, believe it or not. The second, it, it can either go higher, $10,000 above or $10,000 lower. If it's exceptionally high or exceptionally low, does that bring any que, any question?
From bid to bid?
Bid to bid.
Yeah, so we'll look at unit prices and where the discrepancy may be. Sometimes, the contractors will play with the numbers to try to put their profit in the traffic control item or something like that. But it's, it's stated in our bid documents that the, the unit prices are to be their costs and their overhead and their profit built into it. So, we do look at them if there are discrepancies, and there are discrepancies, depending on the project, in some very large and some very small. So, but, but when we look at them, we look at, we get into them a little bit if it's, if it's really tight and really close.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Waldron?
Last year, Joe, I remember listening to some other council people having some real angst with Brant's work. And I realize Seal Code is, is a science. You have to figure out what's going on underneath to make it last. But we did have some issues with them. Railroad Drive, I remember, Fourteenth Street and some other place where that was clearly, they have to go back. I don't know if they've gone back yet, but they have to go back and do, redo some work. What's your opinion on Brant's quality of work last year versus why you're recommending them this year?
You know, the last year, I'm comfortable with Brant Construction doing this, this, this line of work. I think some of the things that we missed last year would have been getting in front of them with our crews to improve drainage along the edges of the roadway. You know, it, it was one of those years where we didn't have the extra staffing to get out and work in conjunction with some of our projects that go on. And also, we, we wanted Brant to get to the roads we had planned on getting to, and so, instead of paying them per line item to do this extra work and grading work and reducing the amount of road construction we did, you know, we, we did what we thought we was best at the time. And looking back, we probably should have, you know, reevaluated at the time and made those decisions based on, based on that. Now, going forward, you know, we're learning from those mistakes, and we're going to make, ensure that we have the drainage. We are going to ensure that some of the things we've identified are fixed while we're out there doing it. As far as Brant doing the work, yes, absolutely, this, this is right in line with what they do. We're comfortable with them doing it, and, and they are going to warranty their work from last year on, on the spots that need some second looks.
Thank you, Joe. When's not here?
Alderman O'Brien.
So, just for clarification, the lowest bid isn't actually always the best bid to take.
Not always the best bid.
A contractor that's kind of pushing, right?
I would, I would, I'm not going to rate contractors unless I know we have documented problems, and we haven't had those yet. But there are going to be times when a, if a, in, within the bid, a line item jumps out at us, we're going to ask questions about it, and it may be, may be a discussion point to, to bring to your attention.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please. I mean, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Six ayes, one nay. Thank you. That motion passes. All right, number five is Brant Construction Contract for 2021 City Parking Lot Maintenance.
Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with, again, Brant Construction for Project 1358, which is our 2021 city po, city parking lot maintenance program for an amount of $277,641. We budgeted $350,000 for this project work, and bids were open on May 11th, 2021. The low bid, again, was Brant Construction, $277,641 for five parking lots that the city owns. And, but I think, I believe those parking lots were given to you in your packet. The only exception to that possibly is the recycling lot, parking lot, which depending upon what the city decides and the regional solid waste group does, we may divert those funds to a different parking lot.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Waldron. Is there a second? Second it.
I'll second it.
Second it by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Alderman Waldron?
Marty, will these qualify under TIF?
So, we took a look at that. Our TIF consultant said that what we're doing with parking lots, while we call it maintenance, reconstruction, some of them would be eligible as a TIF cost. The question that we are going to determine prior to doing this is whether or not TIF, where these parking lots are in relation to our TIFs, whether or not there's money for those parking lot projects. And, but it shouldn't stop us from moving forward. It would only require a, a budget amendment at some future time if we take that money out of the TIF districts.
Yes, Alderman Waldron.
If they, some of them do qualify in the TIFs, and I realize some of them are upside down, and they may not all qualify. But if they do qualify, could we take the money that we have budgeted and do more parking lots elsewhere?
Yeah, I think so. Absolutely.
I think that would be under your discretion?
Yeah, because we would, we would use the, the TIF dollars, and it would be free up money in, in whatever funds that we didn't use, correct?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other question or discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Six ayes, one nay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you.
That motion passes. Number six, Stonewall In riot commemoration flag.
Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the gift of pride flags and further authorizing Public Works to install and display said flags on city light poles in support of the commemoration of the 52nd anniversary of the Stonewall riots. I'm sorry.
Who's dumping the gun?
I was reading the script.
The estimated cost of this is, in your council act report, the numbers are slightly off. We didn't account for the hourly rate of the bucket truck. So, instead of $2,262.45, it's $3,774.95. I want to add that the brackets that we're going to use for this, for these flags, we will remain on those light poles. It will be available for other flags, you know, for say, Fourth of July, or the marathon, or what have you. So, while this cost is attributed to this specific event, we can probably run that cost over a number of different times that we'll put flags up when groups ask us to. So, council recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second?
Motion approved by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Macias. Any discussion? Alderman Waldron?
I guess this is probably a question for Margaret. Margaret, the special interest group here wants to put something up on city facilities. We have not had a policy. We've had this come up before in our Florciante neighborhood, and we went ahead and did that. And they, you know, we were the owner of the banners, we were the owner of the flags, and we did all the work, partly because they were an organization affiliated with the city. At the time, we were going to adopt another policy because we were worried about other special interest groups that would approach us and would want to put their banners/flags up. And we were a little bit worried about what we were opening ourselves up to, First Amendment-wise, that if we did for one, we're going to have to do for all. And so, I'm interested in your counsel on, are we opening ourselves up to other special interest groups who want to put up flags?
So, the, the fact that these are a gift to the city, it's really the city that is doing this, not the group. And that is an important distinction because you are correct that there are speech issues that could arise if we said to groups such as this or others, yes, you put your flags up, put your signs up, because then we are creating a public forum for speech. But the fact that we are putting these up, it's our speech, not theirs. So, we don't have that First Amendment issue. So, that is why we do it this way. Now, it's the policy. I've heard about this. I know that there has been talk about this. The fact is that you have the right to consider each request on a case-by-case basis, and I really encourage you to do that. It's very difficult, well, First Amendment issues are, are difficult to begin. What is appropriate and protected speech as opposed to what is overly prejudicial or, you know, creates an unreasonable disturbance. So, it's, it's very difficult to translate that into a policy. Try as we, as we might. It's just very difficult, almost impossible, really to create a policy. really to create a policy that covers every possibility, every factor that you might weigh. So, we bring this to you in this fashion so that you can weigh this issue, this request, based on its particular facts and merits. And then you would weigh and consider any other requests similarly. And you would think about, you know, is the requested gift likely to create violence or unreasonable disruption? Is it obscene? So, those would be factors and similar factors that you would weigh each time. And you want to do that because every case is different.
Alderman Williams.
Thank you.
Margaret, with the First Amendment issue, doesn't that then just, doesn't that just show that maybe the best policy is the city not engage in this at all so that we don't have to pick and choose who we're going to support and who we don't support with the city? Would it be best just to leave that in the private sector and the city not be in the business of putting up any flags for anybody?
I'll answer that, but I know he asked you.
So, that is a decision where this comes on every council. Every elected body thinks and must decide what values do we support, what groups do we want to honor? And that could be a group such as this one or an event such as Pride Month, or it could be the marathon. It could be, you know, African-American History Month. So, it's a value decision by you as elected members, what you want to support, who, and you would want to support any number of groups. But you still want to reserve the right to refuse groups that stand for, you know, illegal activities and moral activities, obscene speech, values that you know will create a great deal of disruptive action in the community. So, those are always the very extreme on the spectrum. But you do want to always have that ability to make that decision. And frankly, that's why you all are sitting here. You are here to represent the city and its values and support, you know, all types of differences.
So, I'll take on to continue the discussion. We spoke last week about a value, a main value that we could agree to about welcoming an inclusive community. And I want to put that in practical terms, using an example of community members that no longer live here. So, there was a same-gender family, two lovely, bright children in our public school system, two high-paid professionals. They have chosen to move to Iowa City and commute to the Quad Cities that whole hour for their jobs here, rather than keep their money and their home and their families here. And so, rather than think of that, you know, as, we're not having droves of people leaving for those kinds of reasons. But we can flip the script and say, imagine the possibilities if we walk to talk about welcome and inclusion and remind everyone in small ways that there is a place for them in our community, that they're welcome to be here. And for me, this is a very small gesture. Yes, it has dollars attached to it upfront, but it's a small gesture of that welcome and inclusivity, especially when this city has not supported the code of having a Human Rights Commission since 2015. We have done nothing. We have not had an outlet for valuing varieties of residents. And so, I thought to help you, anyone, understand sort of how we can continue to navigate any of these kinds of questions. You might appreciate a draft here. I'm just going to pass this out. This is a draft of a statement against hate that I'm working on with Margaret, simply because I think, you know, what she's mentioning about how we would make decisions in the future about groups that we would accept gifts from or not accept gifts from, I think hate is the opposite of welcome, right? And if we want to move in that direction of welcome, then we can have a statement against hate. So, I'm happy to read this out loud, just for the record. It is not official. It is a draft. "The City of Moline seeks to be a welcoming and inclusive community made stronger by the rich diversity of perspectives and backgrounds of our residents. We unequivocally embrace and welcome all to our community, regardless of race, religious beliefs, physical abilities, gender identity, sexual preference, ethnic origin, or any other characteristic that makes us all who we are as individuals. The city condemns all hate-motivated or violent acts, bigoted harassment of, or discrimination against our residents, visitors, or city staff because of their differences. This behavior is never acceptable, but it is particularly outrageous that any person or group would further an agenda of hate and fear. Moline will take every possible action to ensure that residents, workers, and visitors will not face discrimination or harassment. Violent threats have no place in our country, state, or city and will not be tolerated. It is vitally important that our community holds to our values and stands together in denouncing all acts of bigotry and violence. Hate has no home in Moline or anywhere." So, again, this is a draft and I would like to recollect it because it's being worked through, right? But if that helps anyone understand how we can move forward with analyzing any kind of request to give gifts in the future, any kind of perspective on, just simply valuing multiple perspectives that exist in our community all over the spectrum, I wanted to provide that. So, that's what I have to add to the conversation. Alderman Waldron.
And I realize this is my second. I want to echo Alderman Williams's comments about it might be better, we might be better off just to stick to what we've had and not endorse anything and put them up. The second item that I want you to consider is this is not our core business. This isn't our core business for the street apartments to be putting up banners, depending upon how often a special interest group comes to us. I just don't think that we need to change this at this time. I do think the statement, I have no issues with that at all, you know, I agree with that. I just do not think this is our core business and that we shouldn't be involved. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anyone else? Alderman Schmidt?
I guess I disagree with Alderman Waldron. I think that this is in our core business to stand up and make a statement about what we believe in. And I think this is something important that we can express a strong value and that, you know, concerns about what if someone comes something to us and brings that to us. We have been elected as the entrusted people of our city to make those decisions of what is right and what is, should be put up and on display here in Moline. And I think this is something that we should be embracing and making a part of our culture of living.
I guess I would also remind the council that our core business is vast, actually. It isn't just roads. It is building a community that attracts people, that attracts business, that keeps people here, that keeps business here. And I don't know how many things I've gone to already with, is it Quad Cities or the Chamber or what have you, talking about issues of diversity and placemaking for people coming here. So, I truly believe there is an economic impact to the amount of welcome you can create in your community. And that is supported by the infrastructure work we do. But we do much more than just that. Yes, sir, Mr. O'Brien?
Well, years ago, this council, I was on the council, and we passed an anti-discrimination ordinance. And we were, I think Moline was one of the leaders in doing that. I'm not big on symbolism, but that was something concrete that we did. Now, you can pass a law about anything. It's the enforcement, you know, that, and I think discrimination probably has gone on. I know that it has gone on since then. But that was something concrete that we did to protect people that, you know, in a case of a few of our big institutions, I felt were discriminated against. So, yeah, this is a symbol. I, you know, I'm planning on voting for this, but I think we need to look for more concrete solutions and flags hanging on the pole somewhere.
Anyone else, Mr. Masiass?
Yeah, I would just like to add, I agree with you. The flags are good. And what else could we do beyond that traditionally marginalized segments of our community? When they see things like these, like the flags that show that it is a welcoming community, it matters, just like the couple you mentioned where they spend their dollars if they send their kids to school. And right now, just throughout the country, there's a, you know, there's a competition for talent. And we don't have the luxury to be, you know, maybe alienating small segments of the population just because they don't look like us or have the same beliefs. So, I think it's a step in the right direction and we could even do more. So, yeah, I agree with you. There could be more that we could do. Thank you.
Alderman Timian?
I would like to mention that I am the parent of a transgender child. And this is a community that is marginalized and is not welcome in a lot of places. And so, by making a declaration like this, as small as it is, as symbolic as it is, it means a lot to a large number of people, not just people who are part of the LGBT community, but also their allies. And it does project values. And if this is not the time to do it, I don't know what is. If we don't stand for something, that's the expression, we fall for anything, right? This is something to stand for as a city. The cost is nominal in comparison to what it tells the people who live here and the people in neighboring communities as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I need to do a roll call, please. Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Masiass?
Aye.
When? I'm sorry. Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
We've got five ayes and two nays. That motion passes. Number seven, amending Chapter Two, Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances budget policy.
Mayor, this is a tabled item from April 20th, which was back for discussion or a motion. It is an amendment to the Moline Code of Ordinances, amending the budget policy requiring that the city amend the budget or create a budget each year to fund enough money to repair or replace six miles of road. So, your choices are either discussion and adoption or continue to table it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
What would be the motion, I guess?
You don't have to move anything.
Okay.
Or you move to do something.
It can come for lack of a motion. Just a point of order. If we don't make a motion, does this, okay.
So, if you don't make any further motions, you'll take a vote on it. So, if you feel like maybe this should be tabled further, we need a motion.
Or could I make a motion to dismiss it completely?
No. You could table indefinitely. You could vote no. But those are your choices.
Then I make a motion to table indefinitely?
Second.
All right, motion made by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay from Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you.
That motion passes. Do we have another tonight? I don't think so.
No, we don't.
KJ's going to speak later. Got it. All right, so informational, please. Mask facial covering requirement update.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The, with the June 11th pending move to Phase Five in the state of Illinois, staff has internally had some discussion about the rules and protocols for masks and other COVID-related procedures here in City Hall and among city offices and facilities. So, this time, I think Leah and Margaret have some information and/or requests for input from the city council on that.
So, we are looking for your input on this. We are recommending, I think as Marty said, that we continue our mask policy until June 11, when we enter as a state Phase Five. And that is based on a couple of things. First of all, the overall percentage of vaccinated adults or people in the community, which is still under 50%. The fact that we are open to the public and the public may feel like they don't want to wear a mask anymore. I'm sure plenty of people feel that way. But there are people who also feel concerned about catching COVID, being exposed, and feel more comfortable coming in for service and seeing the staff in masks. Coming in or meeting them on the street, coming into their houses, answering calls by police or fire. So, while we make the transition to a more open state, we believe that for the next couple of weeks at least, that we should maintain our mask policy. Leah, do you have anything to add?
I think it's just taking the most conservative approach, you know, keeping in mind the positivity of the situation and what's best for and out of the staff for the residents.
Thank you very much. Any questions for them? Yes?
Is there a way for us to say, I don't know how enforceable this is, let's just say these are city workers that are internal only and everyone's vaccinated in a department and they're not customer-facing, they're not viewing residents. Is there a way to relax the mask requirement for those situations?
Look, look.
There is, but again, you know, is that only when they're in their office? What about if they're walking on City Hall or other facilities? It's very difficult to separate, you know, groups of people because there's often interaction. We do now have as part of our policy that if you are in your office and alone, you don't have to wear a mask. But otherwise, you have to have a face covering, maintain social distancing, and that is- maintain social distancing, and that is just, as Leah said, the cautious approach as we move towards greater reopening. And we, we want to ensure that people, especially the public, feel comfortable coming into our facilities and, and, you know, obtaining services.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Okay, thank you so much. We have no public comment tonight, so I will close out the, uh, Committee of the Whole and move to, uh, calling the regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please. Oh, Lord is over there, in my office.
Shoot, shoot, shoot.
No, this is.
Chief is killing it.
I bet a Marine mooked it.
Yeah, why did it, why does it?
Because we, because.
We took it away for the pledge.
Oh, right, the other meetings.
There's no official flag.
We need a sergeant-at-arm, just to always make sure there's a.
Here it comes.
Here we are.
All right, ready?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of all, liberty, justice, for all.
All right, uh, is there an invocation, Alderman Waldron?
Oh, you don't want one.
All right, uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Alderman Wentz is not here. Alderman Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Minutes of May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and appointments may adjourn Committee of the Whole on May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty twelve dash twenty twenty-one, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles in Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Ten, Parking Prohibited at Any Time by Including Forty-Eighth Street on the East Side from the Northeast Corner of Twelfth Avenue, North for a Distance of Sixty Feet. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Apply for a Highway Permit and Execute the Necessary Documents in Conjunction with the Quad Cities Marathon and Road Race, Sponsored by the Quad Cities Running Club, Scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Council Bill eleven twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Apply for a State Highway Permit from the Illinois Department of Transportation and to Execute the Necessary Forms in Conjunction with the Motown Mile and Six-K Road Race, Sponsored by Children's Therapy Center of the Quad Cities, Scheduled for Saturday, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Council Bill eleven twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles in Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Eleven, I'm sorry, Appendix Ten, Parking Prohibited at Any Time by Including Tenth Avenue on the North Side between Fortieth Street and Forty-first Street. Council Bill eleven thirty dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Attest to a Contract with Fisher Excavating Incorporated for Project Number Thirteen Fifty-four, Twenty Twenty-One Lead Water Service Replacements, Replacements for the Amount of One Hundred and Forty Four Thousand One Hundred and Twenty Four Dollars. Council Bill eleven thirty-one dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to Execute an Attest to a Subscription Agreement with Backflow Solutions Incorporated for Administration of the Water Division's Cross-Connection Control Program for the Amount of Six Thousand Dollars for a Period of One Year. Council Bill eleven thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Cancellation of Letter of Engagement with Strategia Consulting LLC for Legislative Lobbying Services for the City of Moline. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Moyer, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
All right, moving to the non-consent agenda.
Resolutions. Council Bill eleven eleven dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Designated Two Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars from the General Fund for Relief to Moline Businesses Impacted by the COVID-nineteen Pandemic State of Emergency and Establishing the COVID-nineteen Micro Business Forgivable Loan Program.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Schmidt.
No discussion, oh, no, there is discussion on this one.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Council Bill eleven thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Chief of Police to Accept the Sole Source Interconnects Quote and Additional Electrical Subcontracting Quotes to Purchase All Equipment Necessary for Completion of Phase One of the Citywide Surveillance Camera System for Total Project Cost of Approximately Two Hundred and Fourteen Thousand One Hundred and Forty Seven Dollars, and Authorizing the Finance Director to Allocate the Appropriate Contingency Funds to Complete Phase One of the Citywide Surveillance Camera System Project. Do we have discussion?
No, I need a motion first.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Moyer.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Macias. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Waldron?
Uh, Marty, is this potentially the same as the parking lots? Can this qualify under TIF, we done any?
Yes, then, it also qualifies as TIF related costs. Okay, we'll go through the same procedure analyzing this as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Five ayes, two nays. And that motion passes. Council Bill eleven thirty-four dash twenty twenty-one, A Resolution Authorizing the Acceptance of the Gift of Pride Flags and Further Authorizing Public Works to Install and Display Set Flags on City Light Poles in Support of the Commemoration of the Fifty-Second Anniversary of the Stonewall Inn Riots.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Timian, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. And that motion passes. That is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, um, which, would you like me to start with miscellaneous business with the council and then staff? Or go straight to this?
Um, how about if we start with council and then go to staff?
Okay, all right, so Alderman Williams, anything?
Um, nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, I would just, uh, like to take a minute to recognize that today is the one-year anniversary of, uh, George Floyd's death, and, um, just to keep that, you just wanna throw it out there and mention that, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanna take a quick moment to thank Chief Snyder and, and the various fire departments and professionals that were out doing, uh, the Mavis exercises. Um, it's, it's really great to see the cooperation that they have among the various departments. I know we see that on calls all the time, um, but the level of preparedness and, and how seriously they take it is a great benefit to the Quad Cities, and I just wanted to, uh, recognize that and say thank you for having us out there.
Okay, thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Your Honor, well, as long as we're on the subject of fire, um, we're getting to the time of year when we start having fireworks in the neighborhoods, and I'll tell ya, going from last year, it was, I realize it's hard for law enforcement and the fire department to keep up with it, because it's so widespread now. I mean, it, it starts like, well, I'm hearing it at night already, and, and, not much, but it's, it's begun, and I'm just curious, one, this can be two questions in one.
No, it's, you're not, it's not on a particular question, you can talk.
Okay, I'm about to game you. Uh, is there a lot of extra calls, because all this fireworks with people that don't really know how to use it? Um, and the second one is, any ideas on abatement of fireworks? I mean, I know it's against city ordinance to discharge the fireworks in city limits, right? That's still an ordinance, but it, it's kind, there's so much of it, I don't know how we expect the police or anybody to, to keep up with the complaints.
Okay, oh, Mr. Von Neiswell?
Yeah, I'll go first, we, uh, in fact, we had an internal discussion about that today, and, uh, there is, um, s- some further discussion that we're gonna have internally, and we'd like to present to you a recommendation at a later time, probably next, at the next meeting about what we think the solution might be. And it's a combination of enforcement, perhaps ordinance change, perhaps, um, uh, uh, public campaign, whole host of things. Chief, y- you wrote the memo that started this, so you may wanna say a few things as well.
Yeah, Alderman, you are correct, uh, last year was, uh, a huge increase, uh, in fireworks complaints. Uh, I prepared some documents for the mayor and city administrator and, uh, delivered that, uh, last week. We discussed it to, uh, today, um, you are correct, it's kind of a, a no-win situation for law enforcement. We'll present that to you. I don't know that there's a, a great solution, because we are bordering the state of Iowa. If you do a simple, uh, Google search of state of Iowa, when they signed the, uh, the statewide law for, or allowing commercial-grade fireworks in the state of Iowa, the headline was "Let the Fireworks Begin", and now you're somewhat paying the price for being able to drive over to Middle Road in Vett North and purchase, uh, consumer-grade fireworks. That, uh, you know, it was a perfect storm, last year, uh, no, no city fireworks, municipal fireworks in the Quad Cities, and probably nationwide, people celebrated at home. And, uh, we did have extra police officers on duty, uh, last year to try to address the Fourth of July that we knew was gonna be a problem, and they were so overwhelmed, we, we, we had calls on hold for hours that we couldn't even get to. Um, and so, um, I don't know that I have a great solution, but we have some ideas that we can present to you that, that you might be able, from a policy standpoint, take some, uh, action.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else, Mr. O'Brien? Okay, Mr. Waldron?
Thank you, Your Honor, I, I wanna echo, uh, Alderman Moyer's, uh, comments on the fire department. It was extremely impressive. I also wanna acknowledge to Chief what he's doing with succession planning. He had a lot of the newer firefighters up there, uh, participating in this training along with some of the older veterans to mentor them, and it was a excellent, excellent afternoon, and good job, Chief. That's all, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay, uh, I have a few things, some that are in chronological order. Um, I think I may, I must have sent an email this week about needing some people to stand in at specific ribbon-cutting things, um, for myself, so I'd wanna put that out there. Um, May twenty-seventh, so this Thursday at eleven AM, there is a ribbon-cutting at the Channel Cat launch on River Drive, um, with Metro and, uh, is it called QC Passport?
Yeah, QC Passport.
It's an interesting app that, um, is working with the Channel Cat to provide historical background about parts of the Quad Cities as you travel on the Channel Cat. So that's at eleven AM. Is there someone who knows whether they could do that or not?
I can do that.
Yay, eleven AM on a Wednesday, on what day?
Thursday.
Okay, great, good, Mr. Williams will have you do that. Um, there is also a need for a representative at the INCA Grand Opening. This is a relief agency, um, through the Muslim faith in the Quad Cities. They have a, a pan, food pantry, and they've been giving out tons and tons of food, and they have a ribbon-cutting for that. That is on Memorial Day itself at eleven thirty AM. Mr. Moyer? All right, thank you so much, I will forward you the information about these two events. Um. Um, June second is the date, uh, we were able to choose for our roles and responsibilities training with, um, our esteemed Margaret Kostopoulos. Um, we thought five PM was an okay starting time for that. Please let me know if that does not work for you next week. Five PM on June second.
Gonna send a calendar invite?
Yeah.
I will do that.
Thank you, Janine.
And we're happy to provide food, because we know that you'll all be a senior today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, also then on June ninth, if you might mark your calendars, um, Mr. Von Neiswell and I have been talking about how to gather public input on both our strategic goals or our values statements, our, everything we started to talk about last week, um, uh, from the public and all, as well as their thoughts on how to spend ARP funds. I think this is really important, uh, community engagement, um, and so we are trying to plan an event at one of our parks, I think, did, did we get? Prospect Park Pavilion, the big pavilion, we got that reserved, um, so that we could start getting the word out to invite people to that with appropriate protocols in place. Um, and then, uh, I think the only other update, of course, I've been meeting with lots of different community, would you have a question about that particularly?
At what time?
Oh, yeah.
At six, thank you.
Six, yeah, that's what we said, six PM. Um, I have, I've met with a variety of community partners, continue to do that today. I spent a really good time with Metrolink, uh, sorry, yeah, Met, Metrolink. Um, and one thing they, they said was good to tell you, uh, it's, nothing is finished yet, because of course there's so much legislation coming through the federal government, but I know during our strategic planning session, the issue of car charging stations came up, and I'm finding in this role as mayor, of course, I'm connecting the dots between lots of different conversations, and I didn't want our council to not be aware as we continue down the road of strategic planning and goal-setting, et cetera, and tactics, that they are working on getting federal dollars to, um, add a hundred community car chargers to the Quad Cities, the Illinois Quad Cities. Um, there would be a, a lot downtown, right? And people stop, charge their car, go eat in a restaurant, that kind of activation, I think is wonderful, forward-thinking, and they would be in public lots. So these are electric vehicle charging stations. There's also a State of Illinois Plan, um, that's been talked about with them, and, um, I just want us to be aware that those conversations are occurring since it came up, and we'll see how we connect the dots as we go further, um, and have those conversations. So, that is all for now, from me. Staff, KJ Whitley, yes? Wanted to explain to change?
Good evening, everyone. Last week you guys approved a resolution, uh, for the twenty twenty-one annual action plan in the amount of eight hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars. That was last Tuesday. Last Thursday, I was notified by HUD that our total allocation was actually increased. It was increased by twelve thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars, which brings it to eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and, uh, two hundred, wait, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand two twenty-nine. Um, I'm not asking for any action by council, I want, I wanna put it on the public record. Uh, two, it does not require a substantial amendment. Luckily, when we took this to our Citizens Advisory Council, they said, "If you guys get any additional money between the anticipated and the actual, just split it among your subrecipients." So that's what we have done in our budget, we have just split it among our subrecipients, but I just wanted to put it out there and put it on the record, so it shows.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else from staff? All right, and we have no public comments, so, Mr. Williams?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees.